Last year, hope to call ours on the invitation and the plate.
It's my honor to invite members of our Sampson County Veterans Council to lead us in our invocation. Our friends, could you please join me in that? Good. After the passage, I see much their smiles as some of you see us, wants to guess. Go with that certain point, his hand. That added the house system is a priority, he says. Here's the freedom to say not to, and by that there's this health. And as soon as I said, you will watch it. There's lots of learning on the US right. Ha, has me less carried, less than ninety seven. You know.
For the season, as it are. I think.
Our divisions certified, but the I say some amount. And certainly private, the words just saying it's foundation and the thought. And that this will be liberty and that's so.
Or on.
Thank you so much. This time look at her, prove the agenda, I thank.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do have just a few amendments I'd like to ask for in the work in cities. And what we would need to do is vote all these amendments, cover this, admit after many stages. But the C N A, this is a single fifty minutes or three. Um, first item, um, maybe I long with information accessible playground. It's actually said it's vault or, but they define, or send out a suit today.
Okay.
Surely being a physician, I thought, great day to decide if you're prepared. Item four P, action under action items, establish with a monthly board commissioners workshop. Um, asking the board to remove this item from the agenda to further discussion. And we'll get bringing it back to the latest date. And then finally, item four C, under action items, very Larry services contract. We're asking the board to table this item until the October sixth, four P, such that we have more time to, uh, we so to value what this on the cup. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, this time I'll entertain, uh, a, uh, a vote for the amendments.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt the amendment as suggested and recommended by our manager.
Second, I have a motion, second on amendments, all with favor. Motion so carried. Now, I lead to ask for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So is moving.
Second, all in favor. Motion so carried. All right, we're gonna move right on into, uh, public information and for the public information. These do not work tonight, so if you catch us a little louder than normal, we apologize. We have our technology people working, they got a little mic right here that are, we hope it's streaming and everyone honking here. So bear with us and we'll appreciate you. All right, at that time, Miss Kelsey Edwards, will you please come up?
The bits for that loss, alright.
No, no. Just get out your face and go ahead, all loud.
Well, tonight, I'm about out, I'm going to start walking through the office. You can't do that, cause this department as well, um, she has seen, uh, but not, it's obviously welcomed. Um, so the same thing with public library, library social works and guys, or have been awarded a seven thousand dollar, five hundred dollar grant for the Make Carolina Gulf Government Digital Award to support local digital literacy efforts. Brands will be used to purchase platforms, tablets, and mobile platforms. These resources will support hands-on digital skills training and provide needed access, internet connectivity, for residents lacking reliable service. As part of the initiative, the library will launch a limited-scale hotspot learning program to help rural and younger citizens reconnect. While the extension office will offer train focusing on essential digital tasks such as email use and accessing healthcare reports. This initiative aligns with Sampson County Digital Bushes Plan by strengthening public access to digital and empowering residents with its fielding, navigating increasingly digital work. Um, and I wanted to make sure of the album here because she has been on her chart on this as well. Um, and also Melissa is the one who made sure that we had the opportunities to do this, that really. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Ann, you're up next with the animal shelter.
I do. How are y'all doing?
Really fine.
Um, I just wanted to share something, um, we had a donation from an estate in the amount of eighteen thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars and sixty nine cents. We are hoping to use some of these funds to do a few other upgrades that we were looking at as far as, um, upgrading our playground outside those adults. We're also hoping that just to make sure the well was to be able to weigh the dots and things, um, right in the way this year. Uh, and just a few other items, but I felt once it didn't earn eighteen thousand dollars to come to that.
Thank you. Rich Vane?
Sir, so Mr. Chairman, uh, continuing with some more good news. Um, I think you're all aware of a project that's a splendid vault talk to, um, create space where children regardless of their physical, uh, or cognitive abilities to experience the joy playing on the playground. So it's an all-inclusive playground, not rent. And, uh, Dana is sharing that as far as the tile wall for this, October twenty seventh, the playground equipment will be delivered to the site. October twenty eighth through November seventh, the playground install. November twenty thirteen, installing concrete work will be done. November fourteen through eighteen, there'll be a fourth place rubber installation. November nineteen, there'll be a final inspection, of course, this is all weather dependent. Again, it's just gonna be used, it's coming to fruition. And if we'll make the design, which is December thirty third to, uh, twenty twenty six.
Thank you. So. All right, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, for the consent agenda. Make a motion that we have a motion.
That.
And a second, all those in favor, consider agenda. Motion so carried. All right, I'm gonna open up a public jury and ask Miss Matthew that she'll come forward. Uh, that D S I coordinator.
Okay.
Do.
The number one definitely, like, thirty thirty, that's it, thirteen, eighteen, fourteen, one, four, three, five, six, seven, and like an answer, you may, may, the way.
Do we have any statements or concerns or anything from anyone at all? Okay, thank you, we're gonna close the public hearing. Thank you. Uh, at this time, I'll take a motion to, uh, name the private road that I recommended.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to name the private road, made this line.
Second, all right, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Motion so carried. All right, we're on to item four, action items, and, uh, we've skipping by A and we're going to B, the amendment to the animal control order, Sam.
Home, and as though there have been some animal control officers, we met together a couple of months ago to amend, um, the ordinance. The main the highway story, we're giving the officers, um, discretion as to, um, written warnings or citations of violations in the past. They have to basically jump through loops to be able to, um, write citations for nuisance animals. And so now they have discretion, they want to immediately write citation or work with them. Um, we have also added some fees. If the animal shelter as their empower they can be reclaimed up to twice. We met somewhere, we got, um, break the offenders, they're not in the animal shelter due to the owners not conveying their animals. And so that way, the reclaim fee would increase each time. And after the third, if it comes in and animals will become partially of the animal shelter and they will not be reclaiming again. Um, we also have added a ring of tether. There used to not be a tether minimum, and so now it's can't be. Also, one of the issues that the officers were coming into contact with were livestock being tethered to treat and so forth. So that is now, um, there is no tethering of livestock due to that. There will also be boarding fee, the daddy calls, affording for animals, i- if it's, um, a bite animal or a four week base, that way they're charged ten dollars a day. Time, because right now there is no daily charge and so we're just housing our animals until everything's done. So this will give you opportunity for the animal shelter to get revenue back.
No, I.
And that's basically the highlights of the changes, um, if there's any questions.
Good question. Thank you.
Yes.
All right, I will entertain a motion for adopt the animal control order that's amended and redeemed.
Make a motion to adopt re- amended animal control orders, I direct the minute, back down attorney missus.
That's right.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? You say my, thank you. Motion so carried.
Hi.
Where was she? Well, I'm, I'm doing this right. Library card sign up. Uh, is Edwards, you will, please come back up.
Um, that's a right to unrecognize and library card type, kind of known across the United States. Uh, which also been declared library card god of those people who are on the mother's governor this year, which is definitely bad. Um, so I am reflecting, um, that a proclamation we recommend was that September twenty twenty five, that library card god of the good for towns adopted. Um, in proclamation which is followed. Whereas libraries that see of all the inside information by providing access to research, resources, and government services for variety of purposes, including education, economic and workforce development, recreation, health, and nourishment. And whereas libraries offer the tier, and preferring that support and sustain year-round awareness of students. And whereas libraries provide access to technology, the internet, and digital skills training, working movies. And whereas libraries will contribute to a strong level economy by providing access to technology and training, the critical to the success of job seekers, entrepreneurs, school students. And whereas in times of crisis, libraries and library staff play a valuable role in supporting their schooling, both in person and virtually. And whereas libraries support democracy through open access to knowledge. And whereas library services are available to most adult residents in all one hundred scale with four library branches located in fifteen towns old. Whereas a library card sparks sanctity and empowers all people to explore new passions and virtues and help you pursue a path of life full learning. Now, against this decision, now therefore be proclaimed that the Sampson County Missioners recognized September twenty twenty five, at library cards out of us in Sampson County. And to celebrate, we encourage all residents to sign up for their own library cards and make the most of everything the library has off.
Thank you. Very good. All right, at this time, I'm good, with any, any questions?
I make a motion that we make the hand, September twenty, twenty fifth, for annual library card sign up.
All those in favor? Motion so carried, thank you. Mr. Holland, you're up next, sir. The Roseboro EMS building.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The third time in two weeks. Uh, we can talk a little bit about, uh, EMS theory. Uh, you know, that's a kind of rest three M S theory. And now land in the clouds, okay, so, I didn't say. Uh, we just heard this waiting on this, this land still by touch. Wait, F S A, they did. This is twenty four hundred score speed theory, got somebody, drive through that, uh, driveway going all the way around the building, so it'll be, you know, to come in, they go like that for all shit, that's a living area, there's a hole, big, leaky hole. And so just got us a little living area, fun back to, must do eighty eight, put it back, let them, yeah. Uh, so now we're ready to turn out, be it. Uh, so we're hoping then to next week, we got that coffee. And I'll possibly just, you, you, uh, buckle back, dude.
Thank you, any question?
Yes, sir, is there an emergency generator, anything in this?
There is not, Esther.
Is it, uh, the fire gonna go in this, you get pretty wired for it.
And maybe it's pretty much a stunning wild, what we command, they, okay.
You do have, we have a firewall between the bays.
Oh, yes, sir.
And it's regular system in the living corner.
I think next time, when they live in that firewall, you know, they have anti-grist within that.
Okay, that, thank you. Okay, that's the biggest thing. All right, any more question? Uh, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to approve the bidding process for the Roseboro EMS building.
Second, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Motion so carried, thank you, sir. Rich Turner, you're up, sir.
Assess management grant. Good day, good evening. Paul, I come for you not for to get the rest, you know, pass resolution funding for access inventory and system grant. Will be applied for during the fall of N C D, due to the high spending cycle. The draft funding request for the Sampson County Asset Management Project is approximately fifty five thousand dollars, which includes a thing that I said in the court, development of a capital improvement plan and revise of the operation maintenance code. This requires a five percent match mechanic which would equal seven thousand five hundred dollars, which will come out of the, uh, oil budget, not the local, not the tax fund, but the, oh, tell prior to. With recommendation motion to adopt resolution, authorizing the submission of grant application Sampson County Asset Management Project.
Any question?
Uh, just, uh, for the benefit of those allowing the benefits for the capital we could have planned this half of the water and the county move forward, right, and what this does in America to a state. And so for me, there's let's build more lines and what that for a line, what's on board. And I'll certainly in the coil walk with that.
Thank you, sir. I make.
Water asset.
All right.
Thank.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion so carried. Thank you, Charles. Miss Burke?
Anyway, uh, there have been three separate requests, kind of, um, in fifty, um, within the county that have asked for us to, um, let them have some of our SO Plus vehicles. The first is from the city of Clemson, they would like one of our SO Plus vehicles that can use as a courtesy car at the airport. Um, they would, um, be responsible for gas, maintenance, and that's the challenge on that vehicle. The second is from the Clinton City School, they would like to get one of our SO Plus ambulances to use with their community training for random, so that the, um, students can get like hot hands on and actually thought and don't vehicle training. And then the third is from the Clinton Santos Rescue Squad, who would like to get our, one of our SO Plus, um, you know. Two thousand eight Chevy Tahoe, um, break this with their western, um, business. Um, my request is that can be proven both in, um, renovation, we can venue that, and the, uh, I'd like us to, personally, about it, to go necessarily about.
All right, once we, once we move these vehicles, um, that is, every department's gonna cover their own expense on the debit split.
Yeah, for the, the title and tracks.
That's, that's, that's my cleave, I just wanna make sure we're clear on that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the recommendation of transferring the three vehicles identified.
Second, I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion so carried. Back on you again, dear.
Yep, um, come before the board with two, uh, thought it worked to the grand agreement that's reserved. They have tried to, you know, see, they are for continuing projects that were started, um, previously, um, to design this thing, the facilities projects which are airfield lighting and signage and one-way rehabilitation have already been completed. Uh, they're awarding us, um, two million nine hundred and six thousand three hundred and two dollars for airfield lighting signage. Two point nine oh five million four, one-way rehabilitation, um. There's no accounting that's for this, coming from the state, um, to define some possible money for that, and just need to see if you can, uh, approve the grant agreements and possible lines, the, uh, county management, that will, is adopt the capital project, or that's the first project.
Any question? All right, I'll entertain a motion. Subway. All right, that's second, a motion and a second, all over the table. Motion so carried. Thank you. All right, Miss Vance, senior planner, you're up, dear.
I have a text to me that's quite interesting. At the, their consideration, uh, by cleaning public works in Allen County, Italian, the art of steel, that's new, that, um, one of the, that new manipulation. The impact is going to make to address concerns regarding work source, resource availability, systems capacity in relation to subdivision development in the county. Current language mandates that students box at the necessity be provided, with the extension to Sampson County water system. Where there's an existing water in or sewer line located in a kind of state, helps us with proposed subdivision. The proposed to land that six to nine five six provision by concluding the current subject capacity. This change worthy Sampson County digital refinement, in cases where the county water system lacks efficient capacity, uh, thereby allowing another civil water source that supplies with supply, so that's the, um, part of the tip. The proposed text amendment clarified development standards related to water or sewer infrastructures and offers practical guidance for future study. Text order T A twenty thousand one serves the best infrastructure college and the system develops injective outline and power safety and accountability.
Very good. Any questions? Yeah, I think you asked for a law. Uh, for those that don't understand, we run into a situation with some of our developments. And if we don't have access with water, well, we, we need to, we need to have sit down and talk and make sure everybody's included, to the biggest thing. And I appreciate this, I highlighted forward, thank you. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion. So, we got a motion, that's a, that's a, all those in favor? Hit by right then, thank you. Motion so carried, thank you. All right, is that, you, you're already moving, I like that. Good evening.
Uh, and here I found two, twenty two, right, uh, that's on the, uh, power, and good, uh, not, it's been, though, I can't remember it's calling, uh, I now have way, not a pair, uh, products what's held, hey, you guys, and they, 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 one, um, size, per, they come, now, march, it's just, uh, just to help cover from, actually, uh, the second one will to, in, they, during, uh, they, then the schedule, that's, uh, um, lieutenant, it's going to become plate department, um, headed, uh, uh, mayor, I see, uh, that, they can't, like, having a hard time, uh, they also work that's had, um, count the call, these things, um, they, 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 buyer, having, you know, they're like, you, and, uh, plate department.
Good, thank you. Any questions? Don't? Now I'll take a motion. I make.
Let you know this, uh, uh, through this request.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the changes for the Sampson County Expo Center rate schedule as presented. Do you have a second? I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion so carried, thank you. Are, are, weren't you guys there, Dana?
I apologize, I'm just, this, Dana, share me the other one with me, missed that we can't this on.
Um, I, I saw, if y'all didn't notice it, there was a little stumbling and chatter in the, in the corner, I noticed how far we were doing, so.
Police is pretty stressful.
That's true.
But just, um, a sworn agreement for the division of county-based agency analysis for providing illness additional sustenance project, this project is flooded on state fiscal with clearly, uh, On and see what's out then with. With your glacier here. These asset or motion to give the execution of the agreement for the division of county based aging services for how they are out of. And I'm happy if you look like trying to I mean, I'll through so would this why I'm back in theory.
The only question I've had is, is the, the money structure. How does, how did it work on that? If any, you know, says this project is funded.
Oh, there, there's no counting um, match. It was my understanding that this um, the nutrition programs have the water simply doesn't fall shy of the water release. So this is how they should.
Hell damn well. That's, that's what I thought. I wasn't sure. I appreciate that. I made you clear it up. Thank y'all for that's the impromptu. Y'all did well. All right, I'll entertain a, I'll entertain a motion to authorize execution of an agreement of the division of county based aging services for the P E, P E A S project. So. Take that as a motion now a second. All those in favor? Motion so carried. All right. Mr. Best here. It's on you for the board appointment.
Voluntary ag district staff has requested that Jennifer Daniels, the total Patterson be reappointed to represent district one on the voluntary ag district E and that Nelson Powell and Gory Face and be reappointed to represent district two on the V A D as well. Uh, motion to reappoint and appoint the said.
So, so, so move and a second. All those in favor? Motion so carried.
Next point of order, the next point of business will be the Southeastern Economic Development Commission staff has recommended Clarissa McUcar and Commissioner Lee be reappointed to the Southeastern Economic Development Commission.
All those in favor? Motion so carried. Thank you. And thank you, thank each of those for their service and what they've been doing and what they're going to continue is that we appreciate it. Um, at this time we'll go into public comments and we have one, Mr..
I really agree.
Good evening. Hope you're doing well.
I am and hope you are. Thank you. My name is. Jeff Khan and Van, they do want that this one old what's all the terrorists do. Do I think that to me? It's one that you do well for me. I've been hearing the state just out how it was all rolling on three. So I'm up here. I'm known with talk with T and houses. I'm in the audience. On our concern in album is quick. Um. Because I do not hear anything. And I'm hoping you hear something. I come with a worst storm on because I know that didn't say the grand car. Hopefully you will know something about it in the holy or that.
Time and stuff.
And so because nothing has changed. It's been I can eat for myself. Uh, tough previous week. More than that, more than that is that helped my situation. I purchased a water. And between the last month and next month, it malfunctioned. And I would not realize that I should the wish in it. Hello, family, when I wash clothes. Here's my white T top.
No.
All my cops is at five house, the kitchen and the bathroom. Here's the wasp that come out. So I like me. Help along with my neighbors. And getting on town. And, and this morning I was thinking I wonder if you knew you was you was waking up to water like this. Or when he washed your clothes, it turned out like this. What steps would you think? What steps would you think to make the job? Cause we should be down the car. And if we could get a boat. Of what's going on there. Hopefully and pressly. It's not optimistic one, but I surely appreciate. I've been coming yesterday Monday, May the second twenty twenty two. And I mean, I, I miss some of us on the best friend now for the new seat of the month. But I'm ready to fly coming down. I would like this problem solve. Yes, and I'm talked about in my name. I take daily well off.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And uh, we'll, we'll get someone to reach out on this, I promise. Let you know where we're at on it. County manager's comments.
This is Mr. Chairman. Um, so just a few really great things that happened in the community over the last few weeks and I'd just like to share with you, with the citizens, um, to those that may not be able to. Um, first of all, we only we got recognized to plan the you back uh, August like two um, what a great event it was. Um, I continually I've had that these couple of people recently asked me. And Mr. Manager, what were you and the board planning to do to help increase revenue in this town? And this is one of the very things we've done. Obviously economic development is really what we need to help the personal buyer. Taxes and bring bring mortgage into the cockpit. So obviously we got free to be a slowly. We will be able to keep that momentum going. Uh, next, just to like to mention that we have Mr. Walter Bowles Junior, who is director of the devil's office in Charlotte. He came and he discussed how he took us as a team as well as on vision for the county. We got a great meeting with Hill. Uh, officially, mission clan, which is a very good meeting and we appreciate uh, that interest in our family. Uh, next, I would say that from our state eight, we had the senior health fair. That's my obviously my first time attending that health fair. We'll thank all of the architects that played a part to that as well as others in the community. I attended with, with uh, uh, Geraldine and it was just another, another great day, great days, wild participation from citizens. So it's great that we can do that for the citizens. Uh, September fourth, uh, last week we got to feed the children a bit. Um, of course, Gerald had a conflict with the senior and Commissioner Godwin and myself went about. Um, just a great day. We participated helping was to be of course with the food and what have you. Want to make sure to mention the feed the children organizations with their foods in other way of Sampson and Clinton City Schools. They gave away of hundred and fifty thousand dollars for food and personal care items, school supplies. So um, that, that was just very, very awesome. So we'll make sure to thank you for that. And then as far as a couple of really great things that have come in the from the community, we have um, come the the week of the fifteenth, of course, Sampson County class acts covering um, forty different counties, which gets the sixteenth, Wednesday, seventeenth, Thursday, eighteenth, Friday, the night too. Um, and it just seems uh, once again, I'm excited about attending this and staring similar. Um, how, how great is it when you can give back to kids the ways they're doing with this? Uh, they're able to worry about it, the holy lords as well as having educational components involved in this all at the same time. And I saw a statistic about this that I wanted to share that I think this is really phenomenal when it speaks about communities. Said that since two thousand one, the series has divided over sixty five thousand six hundred fifty five students across Sampson County, the opportunity to attend free of charge to go in this a lot. And it's due in large part to how engaged the community years and what the community so. Good thing. Make sure to thank everyone for that because this program has gained um, state wide recognition with some very, very positive plans happening here in county. And then one more thing I would like to mention that on September twelfth fourth, when it's eight thirty till clock, um, Dr. Gary Fox, who's the dean at the College of Agriculture and Life Sciences for NC State. He will be attending the agriculture extension building. Um, I understand that this is part of the, part of the program where the deal is using all one hundred and one extension services and really um, emphasizing the efforts that are made by the extension service along with the county's support and what they're able to do for the agricultural communities across the state. So that's another uh, very exciting event that's occurring. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other um, comments, many commissioners at this time?
Mr. Chairman, in uh, August I attended Chamber of Commerce uh, monthly meeting as a commissioner liaison and the chamber directors were pleased to have my participation and share their hope that the county can, can continue to attract new businesses and they will do what they can to encourage existing businesses uh, with their services. And I also attended the Mid Carolina Council uh, August meeting uh, where they discussed some of the grants that they have helped the member uh, counties that they serve, including uh, with the grant that they helped Dana with through the uh, senior, senior services feeding and they continue to help our small towns. Uh, particularly our small towns with some of the services that they cannot afford to for handle themselves such as particularly zoning and planning and uh, administration and also with grant writing. They do a lot of work with Garland, uh, Roseboro, Salemburg and Turkey uh, and Newton Grove. So I appreciate the work of Mid Carolina Council. That's all I have at this time.
Anyone else?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, I attended. I attended the uh, August meeting of the Sampson County Board of Trustees. Most of the information I present was covered well by the newspaper, happened to be at the same meeting. But Sampson Community College was uh, ecstatic to receive a million dollar grant from the uh, Golden Leaf Foundation to go towards their construction. They also indicated that enrollment for the fall semester was up and also their standards in which they are graded on by the state. They received exceptional in a couple of areas and they're doing real well and improving services. Uh, the college has uh, put a lot of emphasis on the career and technical and trying to get people to give it a cost alternative to go into a four year university for some of the folks around here to kind of help out on the cost. But uh, like I said, the enrollment numbers are up and they were very pleased about that and hopefully that'll do good things with our, our work base here and hopefully help us do some recruitment down the road.
Um, to the board, uh, in August, uh, we attended the D S S in Hickory, North Carolina with Sister Patty as um, is chairperson supervisor to that. Uh, with the information they get is, it is so great because each one of them deem and glean from each other of how D S S work together. All the problems that they have, but yet you take individuals that is overwhelmed with their job, but still complete the task. And that's so great to know that what they do is helping others in spite of crisis, in spite of hunger, in spite of need. And I'm so grateful for that opportunity to travel with them to Hickory to see all what they do. You can't see all what they do because each one of them have a class, but each one of them glean from that class. And I want to thank y'all and D S S for what you do.
Ms. Lee?
You're good. Uh, I, I actually was uh, got to go into the uh, North Carolina County Commissioners Association meeting. And uh, again, it was kind of like you just said about D S S. It's a meeting where you kind of go from room to room and um, you get to see a lot of what's going on and what other counties are doing. It gives me an opportunity to be exposed to some innovating ideas of what's happening in other counties. So um, and then you get to kind of brainstorm with those guys. It is, it's been real, it was real good and I haven't missed it. So I became a commissioner and I wanted to make sure I attended again. And with that said, I would like to read a little statement that I prepared um, on economic development in case those that missed. I really think it's so, it's a direction that we really need to be going in. So I'd like to share with you how Sampson County has taken a meaningful step forward in shaping our economic development for the future. On Tuesday, August nineteenth, the Board of Commissioners hosted a special called elected um, officers workshop. We invited representatives from all eight municipalities, members of the Economic Development Advisory Board and key community stakeholders. In total, twenty nine individuals participated, including ten elected officials. This workshop marked one of the first times in recent years that so many of our local leaders gathered with a single purpose to strengthen Sampson County's economic future. The focus of the day was clear, to better understand the fundamentals of economic development, especially rural economic development, the role of local government and our partners. The tools available to support growth, the trends impacting our county and the best practices that we can guide, that help us to guide as we move, excuse me, move forward. Immediately following the workshop, the board received a Sampson County Strategic Plan for Creative Economic Development Consulting. More than eighty members of this public attended the presentation along with all five commissioners. The delivery of this plan was not just a presentation, it is a turning point. Making the beginning of a new chapter in Sampson County's economic development journey. And let me be clear, the plan is not just words on paper. It's results of months of hard work by a dedicated steering committee, the Economic Development Advisory Board, county staff, our partners at Creative Economic Development Consulting, and most importantly, the hundreds of residents who share their ideas and perspectives. This was truly a community driven effort. In fact, more than four hundred Sampson County residents took part in this progress, whether by attending the workshop, participating in the one-on-one interviews or completing the surveys. Their voices help shape the priorities and strategies in the plan. Ensuring it reflects, ensuring it reflects the real needs and aspirations of our people. As most of you know, I farm and I believe economic development is most like farming. It requires vision, patience and willingness to plant seed. You know, where those that may not seen it to be, may not see it for years, the returns. So I got a saying that I kind of shared at the economic development. And I'm sure with you guys, it takes a wise man to plant an oak tree knowing he will likely never sit under its shade. That is the spirit behind the new economic development strategy plan. The work we are beginning today is not just for us, it's for our children, our grandchildren and the generations who will one day benefit from the opportunities we work to create. Just as we, as a farmer tends to sow seasonally after season. This plan lays the groundwork for opportunities that will grow over time, making Sampson County stronger and more resilient. On behalf of the Sampson County Board of Commissioners, I want to take this time to thank everyone who participated in the workshop, contribute to the development of the strategic plan and who joined us for its presentation. With everyone's partnership, we are well positioned to cultivate growth, attract investments and build a more prosperous Sampson County for everyone who calls Sampson County home. Thank you. If you've got any questions, please direct them to Ray, myself. I see you in the back by the way, but um, this is something that I feel, I feel very good about because it's something that um, we all as taxpayers know that this is the direction that we really need to be going and the direction we need to be headed in. And again, thank you.
Thing else? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make such a motion to adjourn.
Have a motion.
Sit it.
And a second. All those in favor? We are adjourned.